The meeting is called to order, please. Okay, we need to get started, please. Thank you very much. You too. Okay, actions taken in closed session?
Yes, there were three. A six to zero vote, the board took action in closed session to issue a notice of rejection of claim 644291 pursuant to government code section 913. Governing Board further authorizes the Vice Chancellor of Business Services or her designee to issue any appropriate notices. On a six to zero vote, the board took action in closed session to deny a student's appeal of an administrative determination of unlawful discrimination and harassment. On a six to zero vote, the board took action in closed session to accept the resignation of a probationary faculty member and to approve the separation agreement and general release as executed by the probationary faculty member and the district, and has authorized the Chancellor or her designee to take all steps necessary to effect the decision. That is all.
Thank you. We will now have the invocation led by trustee Jamal and the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Milchiker.
Good evening, everyone. So, this is a challenging time for me. And it, this is the month in which we, and we have, we're going to consider it later, two resolutions, one dealing with the Armenian genocide commemoration, 80th, sorry, the 110th anniversary and the 80th anniversary of the Jewish Holocaust, my dear friend, trustee Milchiker. I've said this before, my grandmother, Maxim Bahadurian, from Kaisari Historic Armenia, had 11 brothers and sisters who were massacred in the waning days of the Ottoman Turkish Empire during World War I, between 1915 and 1923. I think a lot about this. I wouldn't be here today, oddly, if there wasn't a genocide. The reason why I am here and why so many Jews are here and scattered around the country as a diaspora, as Armenians are, is because there was a genocide. So it's an odd feeling for me, knowing that, because I love this country, but at the same time, because of what happened, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here. So make no mistake, what happened to the Armenians and to the Jews, they were genocides. And they, and what are genocides? They're mass murders, based on hate, based on hate of your race, your religion, your ethnicity. And sadly, we know that crime unpunished is a crime repeated. And for me personally, today, in Armenia, in an area called Nagorno-Karabakh, the genocide continues. And so last week, I was asked to speak at a church in Costa Mesa, St. Mary Armenian Church, on the occasion of the 110th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. As a trustee, so I did that as a trustee, and I really thank this district for standing on these principles for so many years and telling the truth, because past is prologue. And we know if you do not recognize and condemn atrocities of the past, they will, they will continue. So I asked everyone tonight to, let's take a moment of silence for those people who have been, those victims of genocide. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments? Thank you. We will now have board reports. I'd like to start with trustee Milchiker, please.
Okay, thank. Thank you. I'm giving the board report for two months, but I'll stick with, for two minutes, don't worry. The State of the Union of the District was the best ever, as was the table for 10 created by our culinary art professors and students. At the IVC Foundation Gala, our family won the most sought-after silent action item, a photo shoot with Ace, the photographer extraordinaire at IVC. It was a hard-fought but victorious fight. As President Stern noted last month, he kindly mentioned me, our seventh-generation rover, named Prometheus this time, was named the URC University Rover Challenge 2025 finalist qualifier once again. So you can catch the qualifying video on YouTube under Saddleback College Robotics. Rover students drove Prometheus on Saddleback College Senior Day, which got many prospective students very excited. The softball ribbon-cutting ceremony and the Legislative Task Force Meeting were on the same day, but it worked. The delightful one-man-one governor's play at Saddleback College was just hilarious. The musical Rent at IVC was better than the productions in London or on Broadway productions. Our student actors at both colleges are incredible, and you can catch Rent next weekend at IVC, and don't miss it. At the Laguna Woods Proclamation for Community College Month, I shared the story of how I, plus articulate emeritus students, saved our Emeritus Institute program so many years ago. It was a campaign promise that I made, and I fulfilled. The In This Community Colleges Omnibus Reform Bill, AB 1725, listed the Emeritus Institute programs as an important mission of our California community colleges because of the fight we fought and won. I was, I loved honoring our student trustee, Charlotte Clemente, at the IVC Foster Youth and Graduation Reception, and she's been our best student trustee ever. We're sorry she's going to be leaving us soon. Thank you.
Trustee Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam President. So since our last meeting, I've had the pleasure of attending several events and meetings. April 3, the Saddleback College Softball Field Ribbon Cutting Ceremony, which is fabulous. April 16, the Board Policy Committee Meeting. April 17, the Saddleback Foundation Board Meeting. And I look forward to attending the IVC Student Services Groundbreaking on Wednesday, April 30. I was also relieved to hear that our international students at Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, whose visas were in jeopardy for a period of time and being revoked, are now confirmed that their visa status is okay due to the reversal of policy in Washington, DC. And now the students can once again focus on their education, which is so important, their personal goals and ability to travel freely. I keep talking to people out in the community to let them know about all the great things we offer and are accomplishing at our colleges and our district. And most people that I come across are totally surprised but impressed and want to learn more or be better informed. So I'm trying to figure out how we can enhance our community outreach as trustees and improve on the communication, and I've got some ideas that I'll present at the next board meeting. I think we can do a better job. And I know at the Saddleback Foundation Meeting, I brought up some things like a newsletter and such. So I think there are ways we can expand our communication reach out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Inman. So, pretty light month for me, but I was fortunate enough to attend the Foster Youth Guardian Scholars Next Up Graduation and Reception at IVC on April 25, which our student trustee was present for. So congratulations, trustee Clemente. It was a great event and just seeing where, you know, where you, lots of different life stories and a lot of them ending in success at IVC. So I'm really proud of all the students who were able to go through that program and graduate and are off to bigger and better things. Beyond that, that's pretty much all I've done, but I did want to congratulate our new Irvine City Council member, Betty Martinez Franco, on her election in Irvine City Council. So I am one of very few Hispanic electeds from Irvine, and so I will be joining, joined by another who is representing the city of Irvine in the Woodbridge area. So congratulations to new city council member here. Also, a product of the community college system went to OCC after immigrating here from Mexico. So thank you so much. That's it for my board report.
Thank you, trustee.
I have no report.
Trustee.
Wow, I'll try to be close behind. I, I, we don't get everything we want as trustees, so I had asked to move the softball field christening and was denied. So over the weekend, I got up my bike for the first time in months and biked around the area and stopped by the softball field over weekend and took a selfie, and it was, it looks fabulous. So congratulations to those involved with that. I agree, happy to see that the revocation of student visas has at least appeared, is rescinded, so I think that's good news for all of us. And then lastly, to student trustee Clemente, you've been a fabulous addition to this board, and will be really sad to see you go, but happy that you're going to be rising, I know, in so many ways. So good luck to you.
Thank you. Trustee Rydell.
Thank you, President. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start backwards from what I did today until the last board meeting. And it was a lot of joy that was shared this afternoon when we congratulated the many awardees of tenure, from 10 years to 35 years of service here at Saddleback, plus the teacher and classified Employees of the Year. And once again, I want to congratulate all of them. Just last Friday, I also attended the Foster Youth Guidance School Graduation and Reception. This was really special to me, having been foster parents with my late husband. I was well aware of the needs of these students, and I'm very proud of our student trustee, Charlotte Clemente. I am so proud of you. April was DEI Awareness Month, and thank you to President Hernandez for having your advisory council on the DEI, putting together that social model presentation. As you said, President Hernandez, we are all one college where every voice is heard. I attended the new softball field ribbon cutting, and those were some great accommodations. Thank you, Dr. Stern. I helped celebrate Women's History Month with IVC's inaugural Women's Tea sponsored by the Office of Student Life and Student Equity. For me, it fostered a connection and inspiration among women of different cultures. It really was a very moving experience for me, and the speaker was exciting. I was also excited, I was so excited with some of these presentations that I showed up two hours early for the SPOT Basic Needs Center official ground opening. This center and the team who created it have broken the non-academic barriers that our students face. They also incorporated help for housing, and that, I know from working with the homeless, that you can always get fed, but you can't always find a roof over your head.
Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Clemente.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a little under the weather, so I'm sorry if I sound scratchy, but I would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to dedicated staff, educators, colleagues, board of trustees, and anyone who help our districts and schools function. Thank you for your grace, your kindness, your efforts and work to support each other, especially as I celebrate my Foster Youth graduation and take the meaningful steps into my next life. It was an honor to be a part of that and a powerful reminder of the resilience and the strength within our Foster Youth community. Sorry, I'm still kind of sick. This leadership experience has taught me so much, not only about advocacy and service, but also about the importance of community, mentorship.
Thank you.
And support. And I'm truly grateful for all of those who have walked alongside me on this journey. As I might have dealt with imposter syndrome, I feel like I've gotten the support from every single one of you. And that support helped me feel like I was a part of a family. So thank you for telling me that you're proud of me, because that love is felt within, and I will never take this experience for granted. So thank you.
It's been a joy working with you. Thank you so much. I'll just say a couple of things from my report. I was happy to go to the Irvine Valley College Foundation Meeting this week, or this month, I mean. And the group made at their gala the $200,000 that was their goal, so that was a marvelous experience. And the city of Irvine is proposing to give $100,000 for scholarships to the foundation for those students, so that was really neat. Perhaps the best thing that I did this, this time was to attend the Saddleback College One College, One Book. Last year, I read the book, but then we had personal emergency in the family, and I wasn't able to go to the event. So this was the first one where I read it and then got to go. The woman, I have to tell you, I'm a speech major. That was the best presentation I have ever heard on ideas of fact, fiction, truth, criminal justice, et cetera. The way she put it together, I thought she was just going to tell the story again, and that would have been okay, because we read the story, and I would have, you know, enjoyed her, her view of certain things. But it was so much more than that. And so I encourage everybody next year, you know, take the, get the book and how much ever, you don't have, there's no test. If you don't read it all, it's okay, but it's really neat to meet the author of something like that. And that would be all for my report. Just a second here. Okay, we'll go to the others now. Associated Student Government Reports.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I'd like to start with our ASG elections that took place in March. I wasn't here to comment on our election last month because of my absence. I thank my friend Clarice for giving my report for that month. We had over 600 ballots cast in our last election. Our president-elect Noah Aguilar and vice president-elect Elise Ho will be commendable leaders and to lead ASG in the upcoming academic year. Our new student trustee will come from Saddleback College with Blake Leonard. He is a great veteran, and I know that he will do a great job at the board next year. However, he has some big shoes to fill. And to trustee Clemente, you have been nothing but wonderful to the students of Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. Fast forward to this month, in April, we celebrated our fellow LGBTQ+ students with events such as Drag Bingo and a Pride Dance. All events had significant turnout. We will also have an open mic night tomorrow in conjunction with our Pride Month. Fast forward to next month, on the 8th of April, we will have a teen beach movie night in front of the Health and Science Building lawn. It's actually right outside. This month, ASG also launched our response to the devastating Eaton fires that took place in the beginning of this year. If you recall, I sat here in January saying that we would start a donation drive and have. We are assisting those in Glendale Community College. The information is being sent out to our peers throughout the campus. I encourage all to make a small donation that will make a significant meaning to the students and faculty whose lives were affected by this terrible devastating fire. Finally, April is a significant month to California community college students, as when most of the college decisions have been released, which is the culmination of all of our hard work we put into each academic year. I extend my sincere gratitude to all the professors and staff members who have consistently demonstrated support throughout the academic journeys of my fellow students at these esteemed institutions. Their unwavering assistance has been instrumental in all of our successes. And with that, that is my report. Thank you very much.
Irvine Valley College. Clarice.
Hello, everyone. It's lovely to be here with all of you tonight. As this academic year is coming to a close, I look back on all of the wonderful events and initiatives that ASIVC has had this semester. ASIVC had the privilege of attending DEIA Day planned by PAC DIA at Irvine Valley College, and we heard from a powerful panel of students who are involved in the DSPS program. So thank you to Dr. Martha McDonald, and a special shout out to my VP of DEIA, Candy Velazquez, for participating in the planning of that event. We also had our Laser Hacks Hackathon. We had 44 hours of coding, 37 participants, nine projects submitted, and four clubs partner with ASIVC for this hackathon. We had three big winners, one of our projects being a UC Pathfinder, helping students find a major that they could transfer with their current GPA. We also had IVC Meetups, which is a platform in which you can find students to study with at IVC, as well as Stimula, which is an AI-generated video that helps you study for whichever class you need. We also had our Clothing Swap, also planned by VP of DEIA, Candy Velazquez, which went great. We had Chipotle Burritos, and we had a great turnout. Saw a lot of students walking out with my clothes, very happy to clean out my closet and see other students enjoy what I once used to wear. We also had our Earth Day planned by our Senator Yazan and President-elect Maba Ahmad. We watched wonderful performances from our students and a pop band that we had at ASIVC. And then we also have a club celebration on May 9 to celebrate the 70 clubs that we have on campus. And we've also been preparing for our budget presentation tonight, so very excited to be presenting with Christian Swazo. And also regarding transfers, schools have come out, very excited to be transferring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where?
Okay. Sorry. Congratulations, Sharla. I'm very happy to be moving up with you. It was very wonderful having leadership experience with you last year, and I'm so excited that us three are moving on together, so congratulations to you two.
Where?
Oh, well, I haven't decided yet. I've heard from UC Berkeley and UCLA, and I just like don't know where to go, so.
Is the case. Irvine Valley College Academic Senate. Rebecca Beck.
Thank you. I want to take this opportunity primarily to thank you, trustee Clemente. You have brought a very powerful and thoughtful student voice to our conversations. Your insights remind us time and again that the decisions that we all make here are not about abstract policies, but they're about real students like you. but they're about real students like you and the real futures and the real impact that we can have. You have modeled what it means to be a leader, how to live with integrity, with courage, and a dash of good humor too, that we love. And even when those conversations got tough, you leave behind a legacy of advocacy, collaboration, and a heart that will continue to shape this Board and our college for the better. So on behalf of the IvC faculty, we cannot wait to see where your leadership takes you. And remember that once an IvC student, always an IvC family member. Thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback College Academic Senate, please.
No report.
Faculty Association.
Yes, thank you and good evening, everybody. I'll start with Trustee Clemente also. Thank you for allowing me to see kind of your growth. Okay, I'll be quick with that. Just allowing me to kind of personally see how you've kind of grown in this position and from representing all faculty of the district. Like, I know that a lot of faculty have worked with you. A lot of faculty have supported you, like you said. And I think their joy comes in seeing you do what you do and know what you're going to do in the future is going to be even bigger and better. So thank you on that. As we come to the end of the year, I just would like to, you know, reiterate a couple of things. Like, number one, there's a lot of excitement, obviously, as we see, you know, students like Ms. Clemente graduating, moving on, reaching their goals. The faculty of our district feel very proud of that. And the faculty of our district feel that we've helped support and helped get a lot of those students there. Along with that, our faculty are struggling right now, a good number of them. And that has to do with the pharmacy plan change, that this is nothing new. It's something I've brought up in the past. But I still, to this day, just today, got another email from a faculty member that's struggling with that conversion, struggling to get prescriptions. And although the change was not implemented by the district, that's 100% true. We do need to find a way together to move forward for our faculty as we figure out a kind of process to ease that pain and really help them do what they are here to do, which is to help students like Ms. Clemente, you know, move on and be the best they can. Thank you.
Thank you. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate.
Good evening, everyone. Having no major reports tonight, I want to take a moment to highlight that Classified School Employee Week is coming up next month. And tonight, there is a resolution in the docket to recognize the incredible work of our classified professionals across the district. At IvC, we are proud to have so many classified professionals who go above and beyond their roles every single day. One amazing example is Robert Flurnoy from our Facilities and Maintenance Team, who was honored last March with the Classified Staff Award for Excellence. Robert's commitment goes far beyond his job description. He founded what has become our Classified Senate Turkey Thanksgiving Drive and even personally picks fresh vegetables from local farms to donate to our Basic Needs Center to help feed our students. Another outstanding classic professional is Raihda Kiros from the Office of Student Life, who will soon be serving as the next Classified Senate President. In addition to coordinating student events, she actively mentors as student leaders, offering one-on-one guidance to ensure that they have the tools and resources they need to succeed in their club projects and programming. Also want to recognize Lisa Liao from the Office of Outreach and Community Relations. Lisa is a major reason why events like IvC Preview Night was a success and reaches record-breaking attendance with over 3,500 students and families this year. Beyond her outreach role, she also chairs the Professional Development Committee, bringing valuable programming to our colleagues, such as the upcoming lunch and learn titled Conflict is Not a Bad Word. Finally, I want to acknowledge the exceptional work of our IvC Classified Employee of the Year, Larissa Cora Panova, who supports students in Adult English as a Second Language Program through the English Language Center. Larissa consistently goes above and beyond to connect students to critical services like food, counseling, and transportation, ensuring they feel welcome and supported at IvC. Her commitment to our caring campus culture is unmatched, and her impact can be felt not only by students, but across the college district. The amazing work of our classified employees speaks for itself, but it's important that we continue to recognize, acknowledge, and support them. Our colleges and district operate and function well because of the dedication, talent, and heart of our classified professionals. And on behalf of Classified Senate, I would like to extend all the congratulations to all our students transferring and graduating. Thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback Classified Senate.
Good evening, Board members and Chancellor Barnes. In April, Caring Campus at Saddleback did feature, did a feature on student supports for students with disabilities. It was really good. Jenny Rodriguez from the Saddleback Faculty Center and Meg Sauter from our DSPS office, who's also just celebrated 25 years with the district, presented on tools that they develop for faculty to make classes more accessible and for students to identify assistive technologies to make learning more successful for them. Later this week, Saddleback's Classified Senate will be hosting its first new employee onboarding, taking folks on a tour of our campus and getting them acquainted with student and employee supports. Later this Friday, our Transfer Center will be hosting their transfer celebration. This is a very busy month, so there's lots of things that are happening around commencement. And Classified Senate is doing all our best to support. During the week of May 12th, we'll be having a Spirit Week where we're encouraging classified to dress up like it's high school. So different days coincide to different like themes. But that will also be the week where we're inviting our students to come and decorate their commencement regalia. So it should be a fun time. And yeah, that's all. Thanks so much.
Thank you. CSCE, Desiree Ortiz.
Good evening. Thank you so much to my colleagues. They actually took some of my report. Thank you for that. I also would like to celebrate and recognize our amazing classified professionals throughout the district who show up every day and are truly there for our students. And to our amazing students here, congrats to you and thank you for letting us be a part of your journey. I would also like to state that throughout the state, Classified School Employees Week will be May 18th through the 24th. So thank you Chancellor Barnes and both college presidents for being willing to celebrate our amazing classified throughout the district. I wanted to do something a little bit different this year and try and celebrate on each campuses in the district to really celebrate our classified professionals. Also, I want to really commend my E-Board for taking this journey along with me to create a community of care in our union leadership and effort. I really want to foster the relationship between our classified and our management teams. And so one of the things we're doing is supporting professional development sessions centered around conflict and how we can resolve good things around conflict regarding, we're hosting this hearings through Groundswell, and IvC is doing it first. And it's called Conflict is Not a Bad Word. So we're super excited. Thank you all for your continuous support. It's been a great journey, so thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe there's anyone from police officers. Is that correct? Okay, then there are no public hearings. And we'll now turn it over to Clerk Prendergast for resolutions.
Here we go.
You're not dramatic.
Item 6.1, resolution and honor and gratitude to the 2024-2025 Student Trustee, Sharla Clemente. Whereas Sharla Clemente served as the elected student trustee on South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees during the 2024-2025 academic year, representing more than 60,000 students from Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and the Advanced Technology and Education Park. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Barnes of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby recognize, honor, and appreciate the many contributions of Sharla Clemente during her term as student trustee. I'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
It was moved by Trustee Jamal and seconded by Trustee Milchiker.
Correct.
Is your discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. Or no, do we do it for each one? Yeah, let's vote, please.
Wait, if we vote no, does she have to stay?
I hope so.
That's great. On a seven to zero vote with trustee, student trustee advisory vote, the resolution is passed.
At this time, we'll take a slight pause for a presentation from the Chancellor.
All right, so we get, obviously, we've been celebrating the wonderful, wonderful Sharla Clemente thus far this evening. I'll tell you, it's been such a joy and blessing to be able to meet you. And you basically encompass the reason why we're all here. And honestly, going to the Foster Youth Graduation the other day was just so illuminating. Appreciate you telling your story. And obviously, it's one of resilience and perseverance, hope. And, you know, as was shared there, you know, I know you look up to so many and you cited many of our classified professionals and our faculty who have really guided you along the way. But at the same time, you are now like a guiding light and a beacon and of hope for others that are coming behind you. And you've just, again, just amazed all of us. So with that, we would love to give you a little plaque and we're going to do a little photo shoot over here in the back. So you ready for that?
All right, let's hear it for Sharla.
Trustee.
Item 6.2, resolution honoring Thomas Cullen as the 2025 Teacher of the Year at Irvine Valley College. Whereas Thomas Cullen is a dedicated full-time faculty member in the School of Physical Sciences and Technologies, consistently demonstrates exceptional enthusiasm and commitment to teaching, fostering an engaging and supportive learning environment for his students. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Thomas Cullen for his exemplary contributions as the 2020-25 Outstanding Full-Time Teacher of the Year at Irvine Valley College and honor his service as this year's commencement keynote speaker. Call for a motion.
So move.
Second.
It has been moved by Trustee Milchiker and seconded by Trustee Dak to honor Irvine Valley College Outstanding Full-Time Teacher of the Year. Vote, please.
Is he here? No, okay, sorry.
Time to vote.
Thank you.
On a seven to zero vote with advisory vote by the student trustee, the Irvine Valley College Outstanding Full-Time Teacher of the Year has been voted upon. Thank you.
6.3, resolution honoring Sylvia Henle as the 2025 Part-Time Teacher of the Year at Irvine Valley College. Whereas Sylvia Henle's journey in teaching English to speakers of other languages has taken her across the globe, demonstrating her unwavering dedication to education and linguistic development. Therefore, be it resolved that we, with profound admiration and gratitude, honor Sylvia Henle for her exemplary service, dedication, and contributions to the Irvine Valley College community and the students she so passionately serves. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Sylvia Henle for her exemplary contributions as the 2025 Part-Time Teacher of the Year at Irvine Valley College. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Jamal and seconded by Trustee Bartlett for the Irvine Valley College Part-Time Teacher of the Year. Vote, please. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries.
Item 6.4, resolution honoring Chris Dickinson as the 2025 Emeritus Teacher of the Year at Irvine Valley College. Whereas Chris Dickinson, as a dedicated faculty member in the Emeritus Program, consistently demonstrates exceptional passion and commitment to health and fitness, fostering an engaging and supportive environment for her students. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Chris Dickinson for her exemplary contributions as the 2025 Emeritus Teacher of the Year at Irvine Valley College. Call for a motion and second.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Jamal and seconded by Trustee Jack that Chris Dickinson be awarded the Irvine Valley College Emeritus Professor of the Year. Vote, please. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory, the motion carries.
Item 6.5, resolution recognizing Professor Anthony Cesarek as the 2025 Teacher of the Year at Saddleback College. Whereas the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is dedicated to recognizing faculty who exemplify academic excellence, student-centered learning, and an unwavering commitment to student growth and achievement. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees at the South Orange County Community College District does hereby congratulate and commend Professor Anthony Cesarek as being named the 2025 Saddleback Full-Time Faculty of the Year and extends its sincere appreciation for his exemplary service, visionary instruction, and enduring impact on the student body. Call for a motion. All right.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Dak and seconded by Trustee Bartlett to name Anthony Cesarek Saddleback College Teacher of the Year. Please vote. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries.
Item 6.6, resolution recognizing Sergio Rebia as the 2025 Part-Time Teacher of the Year at Saddleback College. Whereas the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is proud to recognize faculty whose passion, care, and excellence reflect the core values of the district and its colleges. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees in the South Orange County Community College District does hereby commend and congratulate Sergio Rebia on being named the 2025 Associate Professor of the Year and extends its deep appreciation for his unwavering commitment to student success, equity, and inspiration. Call for a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Rydell and seconded by trustee Bartlett that the outstanding Part-Time Teacher of the Year for Saddleback College be awarded as such. Vote, please. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee as an advisory vote, the Saddleback College Emeritus Teacher has been awarded as such. Thank you.
Item 6.7, resolution recognizing Merrilee Nielsen as the 2025 Emeritus Professor of the Year at Saddleback College. Whereas the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is proud to recognize and honor faculty who exemplify the highest ideals of teaching mentorship and dedication to lifelong learning. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District does hereby congratulate and commend Merrilee Nielsen on being named the 2025 Saddleback College Emeritus Faculty of the Year and extends its heartfelt appreciation for her outstanding teaching, artistic leadership, and dedication to the mission of lifelong learning. Call for motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Milchuker and seconded by trustee Dack that Merrilee Nielsen be named Emeritus Teacher of the Year for Saddleback College.
Okay, as we say at swim practice, Bon Jovi. We're halfway there.
See, you had to explain it. We didn't get it.
Item 6.1, oh, I'm sorry, you're still gotta read that one.
6.8.
You gotta read the vote.
Oh, I thought I did. I'm sorry. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries. Thank you.
Item 6.8, resolution recognizing April 2025 as Community College Awareness Month. Whereas South Orange County Community College District is one of the largest community college districts in the region, serving approximately 60,000 students on three campuses, Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and the Advanced Technology and Education Park. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District hereby proclaim April as Community College Awareness Month and request that all students, faculty, and staff celebrate by promoting the good works of the colleges. Call for a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
And I just want to add that how proud we are as trustees to serve this community college district, two of the best colleges in the state. I know a lot of faculty here, staff, administrators. I think this resolution even understates what we do here in South Orange County. So we're very, very proud to support this resolution tonight.
Here, here.
Thank you. I don't think we had the motion in second yet.
I motioned.
We did.
Did you? Okay, I'm sorry. It's been moved by trustee Milchuker and seconded by, I'm not sure.
I thought I moved it. Doesn't matter. It's okay.
Okay, moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by Milchuker. Thank you. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries.
Item 6.9, a resolution declaring the week of May 18th to 24th, 2025 as Classified School Employee Week in recognition of the many contributions of classified employees. Whereas classified school employees provide invaluable services, skills, and support to the students, faculty, administrators, and staff of the South Orange County Community College District. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby recognize, honor, and appreciate the many contributions of classified employees to quality education in California and in our district, and declare the week of May 18th to 24th, 2025 as Classified School Employee Week, celebrating the theme Trusted, Inclusive, United. Call for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Bartlett to approve the resolution on Classified School Employees Week. Vote, please.
Oh, sorry. Looking at something else.
On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries.
Item 6.10, resolution recognizing April 22nd, 2025 as Earth Day. Whereas humankind is currently facing tremendous global challenges, among them, the need to manage an increased amount of waste to which plastics will contribute roughly 12 million metric tons by 2050. Therefore, be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees recognizes April 22nd, 2025 as Earth Day throughout the South Orange County Community College District and encourages all students, faculty, and staff to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and promote the well-being of the inhabitants of our district and the protection of the environment. Call for motion and second.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Jamal. Is that correct? Thank you, to name Earth Day. Please vote.
While we're voting, interesting fact introduced by Gaylord Nelson, Senator from Michigan, I believe.
Need an Earth Day?
Yeah. April 22nd, 1970, also my brother's birthday, which he hates.
On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries.
6.11, resolution recognizing April 24th, 2025 as the day of remembrance for the Armenian genocide. Whereas in the early part of the 20th century, between 1915, 1923, the Ottoman Turkish Empire carried out a systematic destruction of thousands of Armenian communities through massacres and death marches in which some 1.5 million Armenians were murdered and hundreds of thousands more uprooted from their homes and ancient homeland. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District hereby designates April 24th of each year as a day of remembrance for the Armenian genocide of 1915 to 1923. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District hereby encourages the colleges and all employees and students to commemorate this crime against humanity. Call for a motion and second.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Rydell and seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's vote, please. On a six to zero vote with one abstention and a trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries. I would like to just add, trustee Jamal, thank you for your advocacy and love of this commemoration. We all appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Can I ask who abstained?
Oh, I didn't mean to abstain. I meant to vote for it. I'm so sorry. I absolutely, can I change that to a vote yes? Can you please change this? I was, I was thinking so, I was thinking so seriously about it that I just, you know, clicked the wrong button. Sorry.
On a seven to zero.
It's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.12, a resolution to designate April 24th, 2025 as Holocaust Remembrance Day in the South Orange County Community College District. Whereas the Holocaust was a systematic, state-sponsored persecution and murder of 6 million Jews and millions of other innocent victims by the Nazi regime and its collaborators during World War II. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District hereby recognizes April 24th, 2025 as Holocaust Remembrance Day. And be it further resolved that the district calls upon students, faculty, staff, and community members to observe this solemn day with appropriate educational programs, acts of remembrance, and renewed dedication to confronting hatred wherever it may exist. Call for a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Milchuker and seconded by trustee Dack to affirm the resolution for Holocaust Remembrance Day. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have, I have some things I'd like to say.
Okay.
So please let me say them. And I apologize, because I do appreciate trustee Jamal for mentioning the Holocaust as well as the Armenian genocide. They're both two horrible genocides that have been, one of the many genocides that have been done over the years in Rwanda and so many different countries. Just that, there's a few words I just feel like I have to say, so please bear with me. Anti-Semitism has over a 2,000-year history. It's the world's oldest hatreds. The Holocaust or Shoah started in Germany in the 1930s. Jews were systematically dehumanized, dug out of hiding places, tortured, starved to death, beaten, shot into mass graves, and finally gassed while being stark, naked, body to body in huge warehouses, and then cremated in huge ovens. Some of the mothers who were working in the camps heard their children, thought that in the smoke, they heard their children crying for their mothers after they perished. The 6 million Jews included 1 and 1/2 million children who were slaughtered for nothing they had done. They were good people and good citizens. It was a genocide, and they nearly succeeded. One half of the Jews in Europe and 2/3 of the Jews in the world were slaughtered, along with those that the Germans considered to be degenerate. They slaughtered all the gays and all the Roma's and all the people that had any disability. And I think if Hitler had won, they probably would have moved forward and slaughtered all of the Jews in the world and moved forward, because they considered the blond and blue-eyed as ideal. All the people of color and so many others would be dead now. That was my feeling, and I don't have anything to refute that. It was even more devastating to learn that the Jews in Germany considered themselves loyal Germans. Thousands of the Jews fought and died for Germans in World War I. The Jews were scholars, doctors, lawyers, and teachers and scientists. Albert Einstein was one that you might have heard of. There were uprisings, but all those that fought back, like the uprising in the Warsaw Ghetto, were tortured and murdered. That is why when the false accusations that Israel or Zionism is genocide is so very painful, because when the Jews, when 2/3 of the Jews in the world were murdered and the idea was to kill all the Jews in the world, that was genocide. Israel does not commit genocide. That's crazy. Okay, who were the Jews? They were called the people of the book because they believed so strongly in education. They wrote the Torah because they wanted to hand down what they were doing to their children. And this was about 450 or 350 BCE, which is before the Common Era, where it is written that Israel is the Jews' ancestral homeland. Since then, every seder has ended, since those years, since 450 AD BCE, I'm sorry. Every seder ends with the same phrase, "Next year in Jerusalem." I'm telling you a little bit about the Jews. During the civil rights, Jews are very kind people. During the civil, and every single Jew in Israel is a refugee. There aren't, there aren't warlords. They're refugees. They came from the, from the, from the death camps in Europe. They came from where they were kicked out of all the giant countries around Israel, and there was no place else to go, so they went to Israel. Okay, during the civil rights movement in America, it was the Jews who marched along with the African-Americans because they knew what it was like to be discriminated. They fought against discrimination. Prominent Jewish leaders such as Abraham Joshua Heschel and Jack Greenberg marched next to Martin Luther King and John Lewis, another great man who wisely said, "Good trouble." I love John Lewis, and contributed significantly to landmark legal victories. They played a huge role in the founding of the NAACP, were very instrumental in the founding of the NAACP. The ADL fought racism also. During the Freedom Summer, young Jewish activists from New York, young Jewish college students from activist Michael Schwimmer and Andrew Goodman, and black activist James Chaney from the South were murdered fighting for civil rights in the South. Are Jews good for America? At least 216 Jews were awarded the Nobel Prize, representing over 200% of all Nobel Prize winners, although Jews are less than 1% of the population. Jewish scientists, Salk and Saban cured polio. Also, many Jewish scientists found cures for tuberculosis, leukemia, and syphilis, and developed many therapeutic vaccines. Some of the best comedians, like Seinfeld, George Burns, Red Buttons, and Mel Brooks are Jewish. Authors, singers, doctors, and philanthropists. Jews have contributed so much to our country and our world. They love to sing and dance and be joyous, so it's not all heartbreak, although there have been too much of that. You can watch the first-person testimony of my husband's parents, Cecilia and Abe Milchuker, at the USC Shoah Foundation website. You can also find much information about the Armenian genocide there. It's all on the USC Foundation website. My husband, Dr. James' parents, were in two videos when they were videoed for the Steven Spielberg collection. There are over 60,000 testimonies from 69 countries and 44 languages with 2 million searchable names, including over 8,000 photographs there. There you will find the names of my husband's grandparents, aunts and uncles, cousins, and all of their other relatives who they will never meet and he will never meet as they were all slaughtered in Vilna, Poland. My mother-in-law called Vilna, her hometown, also known as Vilnius now, as the Jerusalem of Lithuania. Vilna was a significant hub for Jewish intellectuals and cultural life with a thriving community before World War II. I took my in-laws to a gathering of the survivors of the Vilma Ghetto in LA. They sung songs of the resistance in Yiddish. All of their relatives and friends. Where did I get it here? All of their relatives and friends had been slaughtered. They weren't alive. That's why my husband grew up with no grandparents, no aunt and uncles, no cousins, no other relatives, because they all were slaughtered in the Holocaust. And his parents survived by hiding out in a rabbit hutch for two years. And they said the best miracle is when the rabbit died. So, so it was real to me. It's real to my family. And the second generation feels it in their hearts, and they really feel afraid today with the anti-Semitism and lies that are going on in the world today. It's very scary to so many people today. And I want to say out of this that we need to really help all of the people in the world, all the ethnic people in the world, and make sure that everyone survives and everyone leaves a good, happy life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so it's time to vote? Well, that's being counted. It's very interesting on our board this evening to have so many different. It's very interesting on our board this evening to have so many different people from different lands and different religions and ethnicities, and we certainly have some DEI right here. Proud of it. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, this motion carries.
Item 6.13, resolution for National Arab American Heritage Month. Whereas Arab Americans have made significant contributions to the cultural, economic, and social fabric of the United States, therefore be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District officially recognizes and celebrates National Arab American Heritage Month during the month of April, and encourages all students, faculty, and staff to learn about and honor the contributions and achievements of Arab Americans throughout history. Be it further resolved that the South Orange County Community College District encourages the hosting of events, activities, and educational programs to raise awareness and celebrate the diverse heritage and culture of Arab Americans, and reaffirms its commitment to fostering inclusivity, diversity, and mutual respect among all communities, including Arab Americans, and opposes discrimination or prejudice based on ethnicity, religion, or national origin. Please call for a motion and second.
So moved?
Second.
It is moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Milchiker that we honor Arab... Excuse me, Arab American Heritage Month. Is there any discussion? Then let's vote, please. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries. Thank you, clerk Prendergast. That's a lot of resolutions, all of them important. Let's go on to Area 7, Board of Trustees and the Chancellor. 7.1, trustees' requests for attending conferences.
So moved?
Second.
It's moved by trustee Jamal, seconded by trustee Zach Dack. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries. 7.2, authorization of payment to trustee absent from board meeting.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Dack for authorization of trustee absent from board meeting. Discussion? Vote, please.
I'm abstaining because it's a conflict of interest, not because I can't vote. It's going to come up later.
On a six to zero vote with one abstention and student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries. 7.3, OCSBA Board of Directors' interest form.
So moved?
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Rydel.
Question?
Discussion, yes?
What are we moving?
7.2...
No, I know the item, but are we nominating someone? I know, but it was a motion and a second, but don't we have to have a trustee's name attached to it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So then let's go backwards.
Well, yeah. Don't we have to nominate someone specifically?
Right.
I nominate TJ, trustee Prendergast, because he is a board member there, right? Is that right?
So this is for one of the officer positions for OCSBA? I'm actually already an officer as treasurer.
Okay.
I'll be... This is kind of an odd... Like, the one position that's not there is community college representative, which I believe right now is trustee Inman.
I believe that might be the... Is it a two-year term?
I don't know if you're still...
Because I've had it for one.
But I have to look. She sent an email with what was available.
It didn't list that.
So you're treasurer, not as the community college trustee, but as...
Correct.
I see. I get the point.
So there was an email that went out with open positions, and treasurer wasn't one of them, because I just got put into that position this year.
Where's the community college position?
That's where my confusion is.
I think that's the same, but my question is, is the community college representative a two-year term?
I believe it is.
Because I just got put into it.
You just got put into that this year.
So...
It doesn't show it here.
I know.
No.
That's what I don't get.
Well, this one shows open positions, so it shows the whole range from president to treasurer, and I think trustee...
Oh, it says treasurer is a one-year term. Interesting.
Yeah, and I think...
So the fact that trustee Inman is on the board, is your term unexpired? Is that why we're not seeing it?
Not up.
But I believe trustee Inman, you're selected as an kind of at-large community member, independent of the board. So they selected her independent of the board. Our Board of Trustees did not nominate her. They wanted an at-large education member, and they selected you accordingly. So that's a different position.
So I guess I do need a nomination then for treasurer, if it's a one-year term.
Yeah, I nominate you for treasurer. I nominate trustee Prendergast for treasurer.
Okay, second.
Good luck. That's a hard job.
It's actually the easiest job I've ever had.
It was the hardest job I ever had.
Rosalie does the report, and I read it.
Oh, my God, I had to do it.
Okay, so we have trustee Prendergast nominated for treasurer, and the nomination was from trustee Milchiker, seconded by trustee Jamal. Is there any other discussion? We've already had some, but any other? Let's vote. I thought we did. Oh, we didn't vote. I'm so not sure if we've done it right. On a six to zero vote with one abstention and advisory vote from the student trustee, the motion carries.
And the second easiest part of that is, I believe... Latisha, are you going to prepare that form? Send that in for me? Thanks.
Okay. 7.4, board policy revision for approval. Do we have...
So moved?
Thank you.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Dack that we approve the board policy revision. Wait. Is there any discussion? Yeah. Trustee Bartlet to start.
Thank you, Madam President. So most of these exhibits have ministerial changes, which I think is great. If we could bifurcate the vote and take Exhibits A through C and then E through G as one motion, if we could have a friendly amendment for that, and then have a second motion and second for Exhibit D, which is Board Policy 2715. I'm still not convinced that we've got the legal right to make those changes, absent any type of criminal offense that's been adjudicated. And I'm not sure it's just in the best interest to have a trustee not being able to represent his or her district or the collective board in general. So those are my comments relative to the changes that are referenced in Exhibit D for Board Policy 2715. Thank you.
So I'll amend my motion to separate ABC, EFG as a motion. Seconder will follow.
Okay. Essentially, are we not pulling?
Basically pulling Item D and voting on it separately.
And we do it that way? I think that's simpler.
Yeah.
So we'll pull Item D?
Yeah, pulling Exhibit D.
And who was the seconder?
You don't have one yet.
Oh, you don't have...
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, there was a second. I don't have a second on the amended motion, but whoever the original seconder is... So you can either second or not, and then somebody else would have to second.
I will not second this motion.
Is there a second for essentially the pull?
Can you pull it?
I don't...
Then the motion doesn't count.
Yeah.
We want to separate out Exhibit D.
You do?
No.
Okay, let's...
I second.
We have a second.
Okay, let's back up for a second. Usually in consent calendar, we pull, we then vote on the rest of them, and then we vote on the pull. Or...
This isn't the consent calendar.
It's not consent calendar, though. Okay.
But just point of order, you can still separate items if they are delineated differently, because if you don't, you run the risk of if everyone says no on one item, you're saying no to all of them.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
So I'm agreeing that we should separate the motion for the discussion.
Okay, so...
And it just needs a second, or it fails.
Okay, so this is like an amendment.
Trustee Rydel seconded it.
Okay. So I'm going to call it the amendment, because that's really what we're doing, right? The amending to vote on D separately. Correct? Okay. So we have a first and a second, trustee Bartlet and trustee Rydel on...
No, it's trustee Prendergast made the motion to amend.
Okay. Trustee Prendergast. And so now, do we have the discussion on D?
We have a second from trustee Rydel.
Right. I think I said that.
So which one are we voting on first?
This is now a discussion on ABC, EFG.
I have a question.
Wait, just a second. Let's make sure we...
Point, I just want to say that you're voting on the motion to amend right now, right?
Right.
And that you're going to pull out Item D to discuss.
Yeah, the motion to... No, no, because I considered it a friendly amendment and redid my motion. We don't need a vote on the motion.
So the... It's a question.
Yes.
What's the rationale for pulling this?
Yeah, I don't understand.
I'm trying to understand why we were voting on board policies that...
But I do have a question about one of the other items, so...
Yeah, that were considered by the Board Policy Subcommittee, so why are we splitting it?
My take on it is that there's a potential that the Item D is not to the level some people want. And again, as I said, to run the risk of them all failing because of one item.
You're making the assumption that it's going to go down?
I'm not saying that it will go down, but I want to make sure that it doesn't risk them all going down.
Okay, so I don't know if we're voting on all of them or on D.
Neither. You're voting for ABC, EFG.
Yeah, but I have a...
Just a second, please.
That's all we're doing.
Okay, so let's vote on all of them except D.
Except trustee Milchiker has a question about one of those.
Okay. Trustee Milchiker.
The question I have, because I watched the last board meeting, even though I wasn't there, and I thought that actually it was brought up that at one point in the agenda, Board Policy Approval, page 2 out of 3, and it's Board Policy 2330. It says, "The board, by a 2/3 majority vote, may suspend Robert's Rules of Order." And if you do the math, a 2/3 majority vote is 4.666 board member. And I thought it was going to be decided that we would change that to a certain number of board members rather than a 2/3 majority vote. And it does not say here that a 2/3 majority vote is a quorum. Later on, it defines what a quorum is. So it doesn't define what the 2/3 majority vote is. So how do we know what that means?
We researched that one after the board meeting. Can I ask Vice Chancellor Gable to speak to that? So it's 2330, meetings, procedures, quorum, and voting.
Right, so the reason that it says 2/3 is because that's what comes from government code, and that 2/3 number can vary depending upon how many members of the board there are at any given time. So for example, if you had a vacancy, 2/3 of 6 would be different than 2/3 of 7. So when it does come out to 4.66, if you have all seven members, you round up to the whole, the next whole number, so it would be 5, would be 2/3.
Okay, okay, okay. Now I understand that that's the way it works. It just seemed unusual. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, so we've been...
Are we voting on those items except for D? Are we voting on whether we should split the item up?
No, we're not voting on that because I consider it...
So we're voting on the substance of it?
We're voting on ABC, EFG.
Okay.
And then we'll...
Okay, so is there any discussion on ABC, EFG? Okay, let's vote on that, please. On a six to zero vote with one abstention and the student advisory vote of yes, the ABC, EFG passes. Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't vote. It didn't come up.
Oh, okay.
It hasn't come up.
Incorrectly.
It came up.
It's up. I did. Oh, yes. Okay. On a seven to zeros vote with trustee, student trustee advisory vote... On a seven to zeros vote with trustee, student trustee advisory vote, A, B, C, E, F, G passes. We'll now go back to D, correct?
I move Item D.
Second.
I'm sorry, the second? Okay, it has been moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Jamal to pass Code of Ethics 2715.
As the maker of the motion, I would like to speak to it.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
I do appreciate the committee relooking at this, and I do appreciate the new language. And I do appreciate that we had legal look at this to make sure it was within the bounds of what we can and can't do. And I urge passage of it.
Trustee Jamal.
Yeah, I second that. We talked about this at length at the last meeting, and the Subcommittee looks like did really good work in addressing a lot of issues that came about during the last meeting. I think it's, seems like very clean language. I've been told, reviewed by our counsel, and I'd just like to ask, so good work. I'd like to ask the chair of the Subcommittee maybe to comment on it as well, since I think you lead the Subcommittee, trustee Dack.
Yes, I do lead the Policy Subcommittee. We made revisions to not make this board policy retroactive, but the direction to make this policy retroactive was during the board meeting discussing censure, I guess, reprimands. And this board said they wanted it in a board policy instead of a part of that specific censure, which then would have meant that it had to be retroactive. And then when it came back here, the board did not want it to be retroactive, so we have now changed it to not be retroactive.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate you, you doing that and taking a look at that and heeding the, I think, the sentiment of the board, so thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
I don't, I don't.
Excuse me, did you want to talk?
Yes, I don't fully understand. I agree also with not making it retroactive. What does voting yes for mean and what does voting no mean on this? Because I want to go back and read that particular, I read everything, but I don't understand what the differences.
So basically, remember, so 2715 is Code of Ethics, and at the last board meeting, it was coupled with 2735 Board Member Travel. At the last board meeting, Board Member Travel basically was revised to read that previously censured board members would not be able to travel, partake in district travel. That's since been removed, so Board Member Travel, the policy stands as is. Now what's at hand right now is 2715 Code of Ethics, and so what's been added is that a censured board member in the future could possibly be unable to, be authorized to travel. However, I do want to just mention too that legal counsel has said that as the language currently exists, the board's not precluded from prohibiting that from happening, even though it's not explicitly stated. So we're basically, the board's basically considering adding explicit language about Board Member Travel in the future.
But it still is in there that it's not retroactive. It won't, it won't, it won't take place for board members, so it's not going to affect any current board members either way.
It's for the future.
So I don't, so TJ, what are you recommending?
I'm recommending to pass the language as written.
But why are people against the language as written?
We're not. Well, we're saying we, we're voting to pass the language as written. We were against the language as written last month.
I was too, yeah.
So that, that was fixed, and so now we're in support of it.
Okay.
Trustee Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam President. So I think I can clarify a couple things for trustee Milchker. So my objection was that with regard to a censure or a reprimand, even though we've got our legal counsel's opinion, absent, I said, absent any criminal activity or offense that has been adjudicated in court, I'm not sure it's still in the best interest of the district as a whole or a particular, any particular trustee's district to preclude that person from actually performing the duties and obligations that the voters have elected that person to do. If you can't travel and you can't represent, that you're, you're a trustee and you're not in closed session, and you're precluded from doing all, you know, essentially a lot of the duties and responsibilities the voters voted you in office to do and expect you to do, so.
I see what you mean, but it's not affecting, because it's not retroactive, it's not affecting any current board members now. So, so, so this would be in the future, and any future board can change it, you know.
Right, but I object to that being now in the future as well, because it could happen next month, there could be something that comes up and, you know, invoke this particular policy. And again, I just don't think it's in, overall, in the best interest of a trustee's particular district or the trustee district in general.
Okay, I think that yes votes and no votes are possible. Trustee Dack?
I'd just like to add that all members present at the board meeting when the censure occurred voted to strip the censured trustee of their closed session privileges as well as their Subcommittee assignments.
Is there any other discussion, or are we ready to vote? Okay, let's vote, please.
It's been, we already did it. Yeah, I second it.
Yeah, we need a roll call vote, please.
Because they don't have the system set up.
Trustee Bartlet?
No.
Trustee Dack?
Yes.
Trustee Inman?
Yes.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Then that won't appear there, correct? On a vote of five to two, this motion passes. Correct?
Correct.
I'm not sure if she did. Did the student advisory, did you vote? There's nothing here. Okay, so let me, let me do it again. On a five to two vote with a student advisory vote of yes, motion for 2715 passes. Okay. 7.5.
Move for review and study?
Second.
It was moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Jamal. Is there a discussion? Okay, I know you've read this, any study, this would be the time to do it rather than next month. Okay, hearing none, let's vote, please. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries. We are now on to Presentations. 8.1, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Tentative Student Government and Student Representative Fee Budgets.
All right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Christian Suazo. I have the honor of serving as the ASG president. With me is my esteemed colleague, Patrick Muamba, the Director of Budget and Finance, and we are here to present our tentative budget for the 2025-2026 academic year. Oh, oops.
Technology.
Okay, did we do it? Okay. I'm not good at Outlook, guys, I'm sorry. Just to start off with some highlights for our tentative budget, from the unused funds, from the, from this current academic year, we are having a beginning balance of $45,892. From our ASG activity fee sales, we are projected to have about $240,000. ASG continues to have our contract with our bookstore, which we have received about 40,000 point, oh my gosh, 4,000, oh my, what am I doing? 40.72% from the contract services revenue. We have committed to donate about 20% of the bookstore contract and activity fee sales, which is important in helping to assist our foundation general funds as well as the Child Development Center. Our Contingency Fund reflects the total of our beginning balance. And I will turn it over to our Budget Director.
Good evening, board. My name is Patrick Muamba. I'm the Director of Budget and Finance for the ASG, and I'm going to talk about the actual numbers for our 2025-2026 tentative budget. So right here on the very left column, you'll have our adopted budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. Right next to that, you're going to have our actuals for this year as of March 31st, 2025. On the column next to that, you're going to have our tentative budget for 2025-2026. And then in that final column, you're going to have the budget change. So for the beginning balance, we're expecting about $45,000 in unused funds from fiscal year 2024-2025. For revenue sources, bookstore contract, we're still estimating about $75,000 to $80,000 in bookstore revenue. We are aware that Barnes &amp; Nobles is going to be coming into our bookstore next year. Despite that, we've had some chats with our administration, and we're expecting our revenue to stay steady. For activity fee sales, we have that projected at $240,000. It's a little bit less than what we projected for last year. This was our first year with our $17 student stamp fee. We did increase that from $10 the previous year. And what we found out when looking at it with our administration is a lot more students were opting out of the $17 fee. What we did make more than we originally did when we had the stamp fee at $10, we still made less than we originally projected, so for 2025-2026, we adjusted that down. For interest and investment income, we're expecting that to stay steady at $6,500. And then for other revenue, which is mostly our movie ticket sales, we're expecting it at $2,000. For our movie ticket sales, it's basically a one-to-one wash. The main objective of providing the movie ticket sales is to provide extra stamp benefits for our ASG stamp holders. For uses of funds, I have been talking with my committee and reviewing the different requests that we receive from the different divisions. We've really been trying to focus on funding items that can't be funded through the campus, so that's travel, food, things like that. With that, we came up with these uses of funds across our four different, or five different categories: campus life, co-curricular programs, ASG operations, and ASG operations non-discretionary, and then our student support. We're also still committed to donating 20% of our revenue to scholarships, so that's our Saddleback Foundation matching scholarships and our Child Development Center grants. For our Contingency Fund, that's our rollover from fiscal year 2024-2025. Again, that's $45,892. Next, I'm going to go over our student representation budget. What the student rep fee is, it's a $2 optional fee that students have the option of opting out of during registration. $1 of that goes to ASG to support our advocacy work. $1 of that goes to the state minus the district admin fee. So for our student representation fees, mainly we use that for our travel to our DC conference. Recently, we've been working with our Director of Student Life to learn new ways to use our student rep money. We found out that we can spend it more on advocacy for ASG and publicizing ASG, so we did add a new line item for that. We're expecting about $79,000 in travel next year and about $25,000 for everything else, including our advocacy events, our shirts. Under that, we have our state share of the fees, the $32,500 that goes to the state minus the $2,450 district fee. And just to discuss some of the highlights from this academic year, we were able to send 10 students to the ASAC Conference in Washington, DC, along with our friends from IBC as well, to attend the, to attend the conference. We met with the representatives from the Office of Senators Adam Schiff, Senators Alex Padilla, Congresswoman Young Kim, and Congressman Dave Minn. With the weight of the 2024 presidential election this academic year, we hosted voter drives, presidential debate watch parties, and we organized three Meet Your Candidate events from the 40th and 49th Congressional Districts. Overall, the events had over 500 students in attendance. ASG continues to fund our Okta Bus Program. The number of bus boardings per month has increased approximately 10% compared to last year. ASG participated in the first pilot program of the China trip that the International Student Office has organized, including future trips coming this summer. We have increased our club presence to about 60 clubs with increased ASG programming. Over 200 events, travel, and meeting requests have been submitted this academic year. We, ASG has funded over $70,000 to the ICC for department special topics during the academic year, which include events, travel, food, and giveaway items. And with that, that is the end of our presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to make a comment, and then, oh.
If you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you. I do have a question. I think I know the answer, but rather than guess, the decreased amount of money was that due to the increase in the fee? Or?
Yeah, so we found out after increasing the fee that a lot more students were opting out of the $17 fee. Like I previously said, we still made more money than what it was when it was previously at $10, but we didn't make as much as we originally projected. We're expecting about $240,000 next year.
Okay, do you think that may go up as people get used to it?
Yeah, so I've been working with my committee to kind of get to the bottom of this issue, and we found that it was mostly a lack of publicity of what the student stamp offers. So we're working with our publicity committee to go ahead and advocate more for the benefits of the stamp.
Thank you. My last comment is, I know a lot of adults who could not do as well with this budget as you guys do, so congratulations and thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Trustee Prendergast?
Yeah, just going back to the bookstore contract. So you haven't gotten the actuals this year. I'm just curious what, what leads you to believe that you would make 5,000 more, especially knowing that we're working more towards zero textbook costs and things of that nature, when you haven't actually gotten the actuals from this year?
So we have been talking with our administration a little bit why we haven't received that contracted revenue yet. They did let us know that there were some delays due to the switching of vendors in the bookstore, but they did let us know that we are expected to receive the full $75,000 for this year, and with conversations that we've had with them, we're expecting $80,000 next year.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Comments?
Well done. It seems like you guys got a plan to deal with the activity fee. I think education is going to be the key to getting that to where you want it to be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on your hard work, Irvine Valley College.
All right, thank you Saddleback ASG for starting us off. Hello, everyone, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Clarice Encarnacion. My name is Clarice Encarnacion. I'm the ASIVC President over at IVC. And accompanying me is the President-elect for our student government next year. And without further ado, I'll get into our tentative budget presentation starting with our ASIVC budget highlights. Oh, I'm sorry. Awesome. So, we have a projected $160,000 in beginning balance. This comes from unused funds from the 2024-2025 academic year. We have a projected $240,000 in ASIVC access sales. This is a huge increase from what we made last year around this time. And then we also have a projected $80,000 for revenue from the bookstore contract. Again, we do have a new contract for next year. We're switching from Foley to Barnes &amp; Noble. And we are going to receive 100% of the contracted services revenue. We also have $20,000 projected for other revenue. This comes from interest sources and then our ticket sales, which include movie tickets and discounted amusement park tickets. And as for our tentative budget, again, we are starting with $160,000 for our beginning balance, which is a decrease from our last adopted budget for this year. And ASIVC access sales, we are projecting $240,000. Last, for this fiscal year, we projected $200,000, which we exceeded by $40,000. So, we are projecting $240,000 to match that. This is due to the sticker fee increase. Again, the ASIVC sticker goes to allow students to participate in clubs and co-curricular programs. And then you also get free Green Book Scantrons and discounted movie and theme park tickets. Last year around this time, when our ticket sales were, or when the ticket price was $10, we had made $131,000. So, we increased by $110,000. So, honestly, that increase for our sticker price really saved our budget this year. And our total budget is going to be $500,000 with our bookstore commissions and with our other revenue. As for the bookstore commission number of $80,000, we are switching again to Barnes &amp; Noble. And the new bookstore vendor with reduced contract missions is going to provide more affordable student pricing for textbooks. So, $80,000 is a very conservative number for us. We'd rather aim low and be surprised with, you know, a check in the mail in the summer than overestimate. Now, as for our uses of funds, we had to have a decrease across the board in our use of funds to match our decrease in our overall budget. So, we did have to decrease ASIVC events and programs, club program support, student services and scholarships, and co-curricular slash instructional. And again, that's due to our $120,000 decrease from this year's budget to next year's budget. And we also have to maintain a 10% contingency of our overall budget. So, 10% of $500,000 is $50,000. And now I'll present our student representation fee. Again, this is a fee, an opt-out fee that students pay when they register for classes. It's a $2 fee. $1 goes to the Student Senate of California Community Colleges. The other dollar we keep. We also pay for a district admin fee that goes through the State Chancellor's Office. Now, we have a beginning balance of $0 each year. This, this source of funds is completely expended by our two advocacy trips. We send students to Washington DC to advocate for our district's legislative priorities. And we also pay for student leadership development at the Student Senate for California Community College Conference. So, for this year, we are projected to have $20,000 to spend on travel and student advocacy. And with that, I will be handing off our accomplishments to our President-elect Maba Ahmad.
Hi, I'm the President-elect. My name is Maba Ahmad, as mentioned. And I will go on to speak about ASIVC's accomplishments. First, we're going to start with our student advocacy efforts. ASIVC has hosted a town hall event to meet candidates running for Orange County in local offices. In our diversity, equity, and inclusion and accessibility slot, we've adopted the Legal Access for Removal Defense in Asylum, where we partnered with nonprofit organizations to provide removal defense and asylum application assistance. Our DIA Committee at ASIVC also hosted a clothing drive where they sustainably refreshed ASIVC students' wardrobes alongside allowing for space for donations to women's shelters for the clothes that were not taken or swapped by, like, IVC student, students. And for our student activities and engagement, ASIVC supported an increasingly active and engaged student body by ratifying over 70 student organizations. And for our co-curricular programs, and ASIVC-supported departmental programs, IVC supported them by funding academic activities by funding them. So, we supported the Honors Program. And the Honors Program supported record numbers of students presenting at research conferences like IVC Saddleback Research Symposium and the Honors Transfer Council Conference of Research. And also funded the IVC MUN Program, the Models United Nations Program, where they participated in the Regional Inland Empire Conference for Model UN hosted by the Riverside City College. The team won six awards in three committees. And for student leadership development, ASIVC attended their annual leadership development at UCLA Lake Arrowhead Conference Center, where they developed their leadership training, self-reflection, and team building. Thank you so much.
And I will now open the floor for any questions you may have.
Trustee Jamal.
First of all, great job.
Thank you.
Clarice, as usual, both of you. It's tough to make program cuts. It's a very difficult thing to do, to make reductions in program activities. How did you, what process did you go about in order to do that? Did you have an orderly process? Did you have committee? How did you go about doing that?
Well, we were aware of our shrinking budget. And that is honestly because the rollover every year gets smaller and smaller. It was just an across-the-board cut to all of our line items, which is unfortunate.
I see, okay.
But hopefully, we have a cafeteria contract coming in finally, which is a revenue source that we haven't had for the past five years. We, we are expected to make 10% of every sale of those who are purchasing that have an ASIVC sticker. So, hopefully, that will, you know, bring our budget back into good health. And, you know, hopefully, we don't keep seeing a decrease like we have been seeing for the past five years.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Questions? Same to you. Thank you very much.
I move approval to adopt their tentative and adopted budgets.
It has been moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Rydell to accept these budgets as presented. Vote. It's right down here. Oh, I see. Holding screen, sorry. Hit the wrong screen. Here we go. On a seven to zero vote with advisory from the student trustee, the motion passes. Thank you. Eight point two. Approval of 2020 Facilities Master Plan Changes and Updates for 2025 to 2026.
So, we have Executive Director Mr. Medhani Efrem, who's going to do a brief presentation for us on where we are with all of our projects and then the changes that have been made since the last, last year when you guys approved the changes to the Facilities Master Plan.
Thank you, Henry, and good evening, Board members. Thanks for allowing us to present today as we always do. We always look forward to present to the Board and give you all an update of how we've been doing. For today's presentation, we've grouped it in three categories: completed projects, projects that are under construction, projects that are in design and planning. First, two completed projects. At IVC, we just recently completed the District Warehouse Canopy Project, which allowed essentially to have a canopy similar to what we did at Saddleback. So, the warehouse folks can safely store surplus and overflow inventory. So, that project just completed. At Saddleback, as some of you were aware, the Saddleback Softball Field and Parking Lot 12 Expansion Project just completed. Multiple games have already happened. Exciting games have happened. So, that project is complete as well. Onto projects that are under construction. This is really a myriad of multiple projects into one slide. There is interior work done in the libraries that addressed the second-floor redesign, lobby upgrades, addressed some ADA access issues, a new circulation desk. And then on the outside, there's a brand-new outdoor patio coffee place, a beautiful cafe place for our students. For that one, there's just a small portion of the project, a really tiny portion that needs to be completed. Otherwise, that portion of the project is complete. The roofing and HVAC, that's complete as well. Brand-new roof, brand-new HVAC air conditioning systems. The interior project, approximately 90% complete, with the hopes to be complete by the end of the spring. Saddleback Quad Renovation Project, I'm sure you all have seen it, walked through it. That project is nearing completion. We're hoping by the end of this week, we're going to get substantial completion. And that's going to be pavement installation, concrete still that needs to be done. But that's supposed to be complete. That's what they're telling us. So, we're hoping that that's going to be complete. The top half of the project is complete and is open for students now, which is great and long-awaited as well. At the IVC Campus Performing Arts Center, there's a storage building that was recently put together. And this is to support the PAC Building for their storage needs, bigger props. So, that's almost complete as well. And we're hoping to get that complete by the end of the semester. Electrical, electric vehicle charging station, this has just been an ongoing project. We're almost there. The infrastructure is complete at IVC. 101 charging stations that are going to be installed. Essentially, we're waiting for the semester to complete, graduation to happen. And literally, that, right after that, we're going to charge point the system. They're going to be installing them this summer. So, come fall, come early summer, really, we're going to have 101 charging stations at IVC on top of the other ones that we already have. Solar Canopy Project Phase One. This has been an ongoing project. You know, last year, this time, we were presenting almost the same thing. But due to long lead times, the equipment literally just came last week for the electrical gear. And they are in the process of finally installing the secondary distribution panels and high-voltage equipment. So, we're hoping this, the project be done as well end of the semester, early summer. Saddleback at ATEP Project. This project has been ongoing. As you can see, we added the new, two, the latest pictures we could get. This building will house culinary arts, hospitality, advanced transportation, and logistics. As you can tell, the auto side is more nearing complete than the culinary. Culinary, much more complicated portion of the project, as you can imagine, with all the equipment and the infrastructure involved with that. We're about 85% complete and hoping to complete construction by this summer in time for the fall semester. Math and Computer Science Building. This project is going on very strong. This is the east elevation picture that we're seeing. The Computer Science Math Department lab, math department, excuse me, will be housed in this building. This is a state-funded project. The third one we've had, I guess, in the last three, four years. So, we're going after state funds aggressively at this district. We are about 70% complete with the hope of completing construction fall of '25 and ready for spring semester of '26. IVC Arts Promenade Coffee Structure. This is a project that's going to bring on a portion of the IVC campus, a dedicated area for a coffee shop, if you will. But on top of that, large outdoor working spaces for our students, our fine art students to be able to, for sculpting, drawing, and painting. It's a very large area, a little over three acres. And so, it'll have a meandering walk, if you will. But also, at the bottom-left picture there, a new cafe for our students. This is adjacent to the PAC and the new Arts Village. And this construction, hopefully, will be completed by end of summer. IVC Student Services Student Union, big project at IVC. We are replacing the existing Student Services Center and B100 and also redesigning the quad completely. B100 has been demoed. This picture that you see is the old B100 where the new Student Services is going to go. It's actually already graded. And I believe PAD was certified with the hopes of starting the concrete foundation this week. And so, come summer, we're going to start seeing steel go up in this project. So, we're very excited about that as well. So, we're about 8% complete. Project's going very well. Construction completion fall of 2027. And then project we have in design, the baseball scoreboard replacement at Saddleback College. This is going to essentially just replace the old antiquated scoreboard that we have. Very aggressive timeline. We're currently in design right now with the hopes to get it out to DSA end of, essentially, this spring, early summer, get it approved by DSA and get it out to bed immediately. The goal is to get it out, get it running before the start of the next season in the early spring. 12 KV Project. This is a critical project for Saddleback. We have systems here that are extremely antiquated. When I mean by systems, the old, the transformers that we have, secondary distribution panels that we have. We need to prepare our campus for all the infrastructure work, the solar, the EV charge stations that we're doing. We're preparing for that with this project. So, one of the things that we learned with, with previous projects is to purchase the equipment ourselves to buy time. So, we're not stuck with this 80-week lead time with our, with electrical gear. So, we've purchased the equipment already. It's already, PO has already been issued as we're designing. So, we're trying to, you know, do our best to not wait too long for this. So, we're hoping to get DSA final approval on this. Fall 2025, construction start summer of '26 and be complete by fall of '27. IVC Parking Lot Seven, Lot Seven Temp to Permanent. IVC is working on this great project. Currently, it's gravel parking, changing to asphalt paved, but more importantly, providing better lighting. Parking stalls, 110 parking stalls, new EV charging stations, but also a safe walkway path from the back of the baseball area, if you will, the soccer field, all the way to the police department, where students can safely walk on the sidewalk. Currently, they're forced to meander on the roads, unfortunately. We're hoping to get DSA approval on this summer of '25, bid it in the fall, late fall, start construction with the completion in spring of '26. Central Plant Project. This is another huge infrastructure project at Saddleback. We are completely gutting that building down. You know, in working with DSA, they came back with lots of requirements, as DSA does. So, you know, there's a lot of ADA issues that we're going to be addressing. We're going to be adding an elevator to the building. The building does not have an elevator. We're going to be adding a thermal energy storage tank, which will be an incredible benefit to the college. And then obviously renovating Facilities Offices, like I said, adding an elevator. But also, more importantly, decommissioning the but also, more importantly, decommissioning the cogeneration system, which will be supplementing with solar systems, which I'll talk about in a minute. We're currently in design in this project, hopefully getting DSA approval late fall '25, commencing construction spring of '26, and complete fall of '27. Our other infrastructure project that we're doing at Saddleback, like I said just a few seconds ago, we're decommissioning the co-gen facility that was generating electricity for the campus, but we will be supplementing it with solar and battery energy storage systems at this campus. A lot of infrastructure work will happen in the multiple phases that we're addressing. We are currently in design development in this project. We're also, like I mentioned, we're adding battery energy storage systems, which will help the campus go through fluctuating energy demands, also provide backup power for the campus when the power goes out, so that's critical. Also included in this project are also adding, in addition to the already 30-plus EV charge stations that we have, we're going to be adding approximately 91 Level 2 stations and 21 Level 3 stations throughout the campus. We're hoping to get this out, this DSA in the fall, hopefully. What was the Student Services Center, now the College Center renovation. We have a temp interim use, if you will, right now that we're working on, big one being the first-floor cafe, and this is the rendering that you're seeing. There's an item today for you all to approve, for a contractor to come in and do a quick minor TI of that space, so students can have a cafe place in the quad area in that building in the interim phase before we start construction of the building. Long-term, we've commenced design and been meeting with the colleges and end-users, and the timeline that you see for that is on the right, and we're hoping to get complete working drawings next spring with the DSA final approval soon after, in this early spring '27, commence construction fall '28, and complete construction in '31. The Landscape Improvement Phase 2 Project, we recently, not too long ago, finished Phase 1. We're on to Phase 2 now and addressing the different areas on campus, landscape improvements, walkway improvements. The bigger, the picture that you see there is going to address not only additional bioswells, but a new accessible path from the lower Marguerite that will give access to parking lots 10 and 11. And that's one of many of things that we're doing in the Landscape Phase 2 Project. We're hoping to complete working drawings this spring with DSA final approval end of the summer, hopefully, commence construction fall, and then complete construction fall of '26. And I was halfway going to say, Trustee Prangeress, we're halfway there, but I forgot to say that, sorry.
I have a...
I'll take your questions now.
Yeah, can I have a comment?
Yes.
First of all, Mehdi, this is fabulous. This is, it woke me up completely. I'm very, very excited about everything that you're doing and everything that's going on on both campuses. The campuses are looking more and more beautiful all the time, and they're just more and more functional. And I do know that the Culinary Arts Faculty and the Automotive Faculty are very excited about moving up to ATEP, and that's going to be really phenomenal. And I'm happy to see the Horticulture Department is finally doing a cultural garden. They've been talking about it for a long time. And I mean, I taught junior high school, I taught high school, and I taught community college, and I know that the learning environment, the classroom, if it's neat and clean and there's nice things on the wall and there's nice buildings, it creates a learning environment for the students. So it really makes a difference for our students that come on campus to actually feel at home and that it's a beautiful environment, and they're happy to be here. And Saddleback College is such a beautiful area with the mountains all around it, and Urban Valley College is in such a nice flat area that it's very, very exciting, and I can't wait to take a tour of all these areas. And also, I want to congratulate you on getting funding for several of our buildings. That hasn't been done for a long time, so we keep up at it, because we could use the buildings and the funds that we don't have to spend our own money for it. So good job, thank you.
And just to add, thank you, Trustee Miltucher, just to add, you know, we kind of went through this so quickly with all the infrastructure projects that we're doing, the number of sustainability work that we're doing is incredible. So one of the things that we're going to do is I'll be working with Letitia and the campus PIOs as well, is highlighting all the work that we're doing and showing folks, you know, all the sustainability efforts that we're doing on campus.
Great, wonderful.
Trustee Jamal? No, Trustee Prangeress? Okay.
No, you go ahead. So, great, yeah, great job again. My lifelong passion is baseball. My son played baseball up at, to the Division 1 level, so I mean, baseball is near and dear to my heart, and it is here, and the program here is fabulous. But the costs associated with the turf replacement and the scoreboard are quite significant. Can you just talk about those two elements?
So outside of the obvious escalation deal that we have to do, I'm not even going to go there, but just the complete area has to completely be regraded. What we found is when we were doing our civil assessment is one side is taller than the other, there is slope issues that we have by first base that we have to address, that we have to put retaining walls in. It's, it looks easy, but it's not. There's a lot of civil work involved, one dugout replacements, and then restroom also. There's no restroom there. And so that just kind of cumulatively just added the cost.
Okay, and then what about the scoreboard?
Scoreboard, oh, I mean...
Is it going to have video?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, very similar, a little bigger than the softball one, because it's further out, but yes, it is going to have a video. So we did, the project's been bifurcated, if you will, we're going to be doing scoreboard first.
I saw that.
Yeah, we want to do that right away. But just the cost, it's, we have, there's some civil work we have to do behind the baseball field as well, and for some infrastructure work, so it's just cost.
And then the quad? When, let's set aside this week, what do you think the date will be? When it will be open?
I'm hoping substantial completion within this week or next week, and then we go through our normal punch that we have to do, the contractor. We have to get substantial before we do punch, so I'm hoping substantial this week or next week.
The contractor has given us May 2nd, which is Friday. So that's why Mehdi, I think, is saying this week or next week. They do have a lot of folks out there, they are working pretty quickly. They've come a long way just in the last week, so we're very hopeful that they will get to substantial this Friday.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm just going to segue off that. President Hernandez, a really very nice video scoreboard for a swimming pool is only $65,000, and even with tariffs from China, it would be $150,000, way less than $4 million, just saying.
Predictable.
You should get him his swimming pool, we really should.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments about this marvelous amount of progress? Anything? Okay, so it's recommended that we approve the revisions to the facilities plan. Can we have motions?
Move the item. Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Bartlett and seconded by Trustee Miltucher that we approve the revisions. Let's vote. On a seven-to-zero vote with the trustee, student trustee advisory vote, this passes. We are to 8.3 Basic Aid Allocation Recommendation for 2025 to 2026.
Yes, thank you, and we have our Executive Director, Ms. Connie Kavanaugh, here, who's going to give a brief presentation on this.
Good evening. Third, but not, well, last but not least, I guess, I should say. Third time's the charm. So, good evening, I'm going to here to go over our basic aid allocation recommendation for next fiscal year '25, '26. So just as a reminder, our District Resources Allocation Council serves as the guiding body to make the recommendation first to the chancellor's office, and the chancellor that then comes forward to the board for recommendation each year. And this just shows sort of a hierarchy of what happens. So District Resource Allocation Council works off of the recommendations that also come through the District Technology Committee and the Capital Improvement Committee. So we are developing this recommendation based on the projections and estimates we are working on for the tentative budget. So first, the estimated balance as of July 1st is really comprised of the prior-year contingency that we set aside for the unrealized tax collections, plus any ending balance that we're anticipating based on our estimated actuals for the '24, '25 fiscal year. So as an example, our projected property taxes seem to be coming in higher than anticipated, so that will result in some additional unallocated funds in the '24, '25 year that will now be available to spend in '25, '26. That second line there, the 102 million is our estimated basic aid receipts for next fiscal year, and that's made up of our property taxes, as well as 98% of our enrollment fee revenue. And then we back out the amount we're anticipating to allocate to the colleges through the SCFF calculation in the DRAC model. So that remaining balance of 123.1 million is what is available to us to allocate for the basic aid needs. So first, we fund by our policy, our board policy, we say first, we're going to fund any of our long-term obligations or fixed expenses that we expect for next fiscal year. So that's demonstrated here graphically. It includes our retiree benefit contribution to our retiree benefit trust, and that really is based on our actuarial studies. We do that each fiscal year, or sorry, every calendar year. So our last study was completed in December, and part of that valuation report demonstrates what they call the normal cost, which is really what we anticipate to spend next year for the cost of retiree benefits. We also set aside funds for legislative advocacy on behalf of the district. The biggest piece of the pie here is what we spend towards our pension stabilization, and that's the monies we set aside to fund the district's costs in excess of the pension rates that were in place in 2015, '16. Unfortunately, that number keeps growing. The good news is that we didn't know at the time of this estimation, but PERS actually reduced its rate for next year, which is the first time in a long, long time that that's happened, so hopefully that trend will continue. And then last piece is what we anticipate to spend on the credit card and bank fees, mostly as it represents the collection of payments for our student fees. So after we've set aside those, the funds for the long-term obligations and the fixed expenses, we look to both capital projects and technology projects that need to be funded. So again, as I mentioned earlier, that works through the KIC committee for our capital projects and the DTC committee for our technology. So this is just representing the projects that are being recommended for next year to be funded for the capital needs. We've broken it up here based on capital projects. We annually set aside funds for ADA to make sure we're doing any necessary upgrades on our campuses. There are some scheduled maintenance projects set forward and some other renovation-related projects. I'm not going to read through those. A lot of it's covered in what Mehdi just shared in regards to our master plan. Any of the capital projects are based on our master plan needs. So likewise, for the technology needs, we work through the DTC, the District Technology Committee. We've isolated these, first, we sort of set aside funds for our ERP systems that are funded out of basic aid, that's up there in the first box, and then we work through district-wide projects, as well as each college has projects represented here. Many of them are recurring projects, such as desktop computer refresh, but then annually, based on their own technology plans, as well as the district technology plan, we're working towards fulfilling the master plan obligations. It's just another picture to show how we're spending the 123.1 million that we have available. So the smallest piece of the pie, or pyramid, not pie, is the DTC requests of just under, or just over 15.4 million, those long-term obligations of fixed expenses of just under 26 million, and last but not least, almost $82 million in capital requests, capital project requests. So part of this process, we always want to make sure we're looking to the future to estimate what we anticipate to have available for our basic aid needs. So this is the next three fiscal years after next year. So we update the estimate for, sorry, estimate for the property taxes at a 4% rate each year. That's what we have seen as an average trend over the last, you know, five to 10 years. We are incorporating the cost of living adjustment as it's currently projected by School Services of California, and that's really as it relates to the DRAC model needs through the SCFF funding. We then plug in, based on the facility master plan needs, we add in those amounts that we anticipate to spend based on their cash flow projections, as well as the technology strategic master plan needs. We are still in the process of formally updating that technology master plan, so those numbers are really more of an estimate at this point, and as we finalize that report, we'll have a more concrete cash flow need. So the bottom line is the amount remaining based on our projected revenues that we anticipate and the needs identified in those plans. As we can see, there is a red number at the bottom, which means we won't have enough to likely fund the master plan as it's currently in state, but we address those changes annually as Mehdi just presented, which happened this year as well. We always have to go through and make sure we're prioritizing the greatest need based on the funds we have available.
Any questions? Are there any questions?
Well, I do like the fact that in these days, our budget's an open book, and everyone could look at it, it's totally transparent, and everyone can look at it and talk about it, and that's great. I do also like the fact, we're continuing to make sure that we're paying off our long-term expenses, which most other districts don't do, because they don't have the funds and we do. So we're very fiscally, we're probably one of the most fiscally stable districts in the state, which I'm very proud of. What about that shortfall? Is that a problem?
Well, if we look back historically, that's always been the case, that the master plan really is developed in the hopes that we have all the monies that we would need to address those needs on an annual basis. And unfortunately, with escalating costs of some of the plans we have, you know, the projects as they maybe were initially intended versus the actual costs as they are today, we're not always able to stay up with the cash flows as maybe it was originally developed in the plan. So that isn't unusual. We just like to show status quo, if everything stayed as expected, that's what we would anticipate. But we do work through that each year to make sure we fund, you know, the most prioritized projects first.
We do know that Vice Senator Gable is like the best in the state, so we're relying on her. Thank you.
Trustee, I'm sorry. Trustee Dak and then Trustee Jamal.
Thank you for the presentations, very enlightening. I just want to know, how do you prioritize what is the most need when it comes to moving around projects for the facilities master plan? And my main concern comes out of student housing, which for me, I think, should be the highest priority, but I don't know, I just want to go through that process, like, how is that determined?
So those go back to the KIC and DTC committees to work through that prioritization process, and I don't know if Anne Marie wants to jump in and give you any more enlightenment in regards to that, but go ahead.
Right, so we try to stick to the prioritizations that come from the campuses as closely as possible, and when we do have the shortfalls, like what we're projecting, what that means is we're kind of pushing projects out. At this point in time, we have not pushed out either one of the student housing projects based upon the FMP, so we will still continue to start design on the IVC one in early '26 with the intent that that would open up really kind of in the fall of '28, '29. So we're still on target for that, we're still holding true to that. And then, if you recall, the student housing for Saddleback, the way it's in the FMP, that... And then, if you recall, the student housing for Saddleback, the way it's in the FMP, that's around '3031 of when that'll come out.
Thank you.
Great job. Just a quick question. I don't know if it's probably to you, Ann Marie. So, the county tax collector's been, the office and herself, has been in some great turmoil the last few months. So, is it impacting us at all in terms of transfers, or is there any, we haven't seen any interruption because of the turmoil in that office?
No, we haven't seen anything.
Okay. Thanks.
Trustee Rydell?
Yes, I have a question on baseball scoreboard replacement. Okay, it reads $2.5 million. Am I just thinking wrong, that I'm just thinking of a huge monitor that's $2.5 million and getting it set up? Is that what that's for?
I can't speak to the particulars in the project maybe the same way Ben Hahnie or Ann Marie can.
Yeah, so the scoreboard, that is, that is the one that the total cost is closer to $5 million. This is just what the allocation is for '2526 in order to complete the project. And yes, I mean, it has a lot of footings. There's a lot of infrastructure that we're having to put in for that. There's a lot of technology lines that are being pulled for that. Ben Hahnie, you want to cover whatever else is going in there, but there, it is more than just, we say it's a scoreboard replacement. It's a little bit more than that, but things have gone up astronomically.
Yeah, it's the total project cost, which has hard costs and soft costs. The soft cost includes the IORs, the geotech, and so that just multiplies the costs, unfortunately. And so, the, it's not just the scoreboard itself. It's all the other consultants that we have to bring in on site, project managers, construction managers. So, it's more than just the actual sign itself.
IORs, Inspector of Record. You use a lot of acronyms there. And I just wanted to point out, too, that these, as Ben Hahnie mentioned, these are the amounts we're allocating next year for each of these projects. It's not necessarily, it's a cash flow basis, so these, this isn't the entirety of the project cost. It's just the amount being funded to those ongoing or projects as they initiate to meet the needs of the costs for the '2526 fiscal year.
Okay. Did you have?
No, it's expensive.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Just one other thing that I wanted to mention, and I should have mentioned it when I was answering trustee Dak's question. The state is coming up with applications in order to apply for a lease revenue bond for student housing. So, that is something that we will be doing applications. Those applications are going to be due July 1st, 2026, so we're about a year out. But just so you know, that that is something that we are looking to trustee Milchick's point earlier of trying to get funding from the state to help us with the projects.
Very good idea.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, trustee Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam President. So, relative to student housing, we have the property. Have we thought about maybe using the P3 model or public-private partnership where the private sector, we provide the land, private sector comes in and builds everything out, and we get a ground lease?
Yes, we have done that. We've done extensive studies on that, and our goal was to try to keep the rents to the students as low as possible. And in order to do that, it was determined that we needed to finance it ourselves, because otherwise, if we did a P3, the rates that would be charged to the students would basically be market rates.
Yeah, and it depends on the P3 partners. Some are geared towards market-rate properties, and some partners could be a better mix. So, I think it's just a matter of identifying possible partners that might work, but I totally understand, because at market rate, it just, with the rents around here, it does not work. But it's a matter of maybe putting up some feelers to see if we can get some of those partners that are really truly affordable housing, P3 partners, where they could provide affordable rents for our students and still make a little profit.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? See, we didn't do our actual motion yet. Do we have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Dak and seconded by trustee Bartlet to approve the allocations for the basic aid. Is there any other discussion? On a, excuse me, on a seven to zero vote with trustee, student trustee advisory vote, this motion passes. Thank you. We are now looking at the consent calendar. Are there any items you wish to push, pull? Sounds kind of the same. Any? Uh huh?
Thank you, Madam President. Items 9.10 and 9.11.
9.10 and 9.11?
Correct.
Okay, make sure I get the right ones. Are there any other polls? Okay, so, let's then vote on the rest of the consent calendar.
Move the balance?
You need a motion? So moved. Second.
It's been improved, it's been moved by trustee Dak and seconded by, which one?
Trustee Jamal.
On a seven to zero vote, including the advisory vote by the student trustee, the rest of the consent calendar has been approved. Let's move to 9.10. Trustee Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam President. So, question relative to item number one, the utility cost management, spending $160,000 to look at utility bill analysis to identify cost savings. How does that play into the decommissioning of the CoGen plant and also relative to installing all of the solar canopies? And is this strictly for the Irvine Valley College campus or both, just as IVC?
So, the dollar amount, $160,000, is really a not-to-exceed amount, and it's an estimate based upon any cost savings that may be found by the company. So, what the company's going to be doing is they're going to be looking at our past utility bills and determining whether or not we have been overcharged for anything or if there's any cost savings that we could find. If they do find cost savings and if we do get those funds back to us, then they share in a piece of that, and that's what the dollar value is. We're not paying for the service upfront. It's something they're doing with the intent that they're going to find savings, and they would share in part of that savings.
Okay, that gives me better clarity.
And to answer your other question, this one is for IVC. Saddleback College is doing the same thing, so probably, next month, you'll probably see Saddleback's contract on the agenda.
Okay, and then, whatever cost savings they provide, we split the savings. But in the future, hopefully, this won't be an issue because we'll have all of those solar canopies out there helping us out for our utilities. Hopefully, yes. Okay, great. Thank you. I don't have any further questions, and I will move the item.
Been moved by trustee Bartlet and seconded by trustee Prendergast. 9.10 contracts. Any other discussion? On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote, 9.10 has passed.
She abstained. The student abstained.
Okay, then let's read that again. On a seven to zero vote, the ratification of this, this contract listed has passed.
You should just read that the student, the student abstained.
Okay, the student abstained. 9.11?
Thank you, Madam President. I think I may have answered my own question here. The print's really small, and I just noticed the contract is a six-year contract, so we're in amendment seven of this contract, but it is a long-term contract, and it's probably not unreasonable to have that many change orders within that timeframe.
Is this the Arcadis one? What page number are you on?
I'm on page one of two. It's the, gosh, it's really small here, Little Diversified Architectural Consulting. And I just noticed the start and end dates of the contract, so it's a six-year, essentially a six-year contract.
Right, so this, this project has really morphed throughout the planning phase of it. It started out very small, then it got bigger. So, it's, I would say when we're designing something like that, it's not unusual to have that many amendments. We do try to limit them as much as possible, but while we're still going through, and as you know, under construction and everything, because this is for the Quad project, that there are delays related to that, as well as additional designs that come up on the fly as you're going through construction. So, it's not that unusual to have that many amendments over that length of a time.
Yeah, totally understand. And then, going back to item one, the Solx construction, they want to increase the contract value, and then, there's additional DSA required changes and revisions to liquidated damages. Can you, what type of revisions specific to the liquidated damages portion of the contract?
So, with this one, this is kind of a, the amendment here is a final coordination, and I would say negotiation with this vendor. So, this contractor is the one who's putting in the solar panels for Saddleback College. They have been extremely delayed and haven't been, I would say, doing their due diligence on completing the project timely. They've had issues with their subcontractors. We were close to terminating this contract, and as a result of those negotiations of going through with them is how we kind of came up to this final settlement agreement where we've extended the term. And then, on the liquidated damages, I'm trying to remember, I'm going to turn to Ben Hahnie to see if he remembers the value, but we did adjust the value somewhat to more accurately reflect where we are today with liquidated damages and what that could be if they don't complete it within the new finalized date of July 18th.
Okay, because I think with this change order, we're now looking at this, with this change order, it's about $63,000 and some change, which is a pretty significant amount. Hopefully, I guess we'll keep that in mind when we're looking at, we have a lot more solar canopy projects. Okay.
Yes, yes. This vendor was a smaller vendor, and it's been a challenge from the day that we first signed the contract, so.
And with the smaller vendors, it can be a challenge, especially when you've got some large-scale multi-site projects, and, you know, they, plus with supply chain issues and everything else going on right now, the smaller vendor do have some major challenges. Okay, I understand where, why we are where we are. So, I don't have any further questions at this point. Thank you for coming to the podium, though. With that, I'll move the item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. It's been moved by trustee Bartlet and seconded by trustee Rydell to ratify 9.11. Let's vote, please. Well, actually, I should ask, is there any other discussion? On a seven to zero vote with student advisory vote, yes, this passes. Okay, we are now on to business services, number 10, 10.1.
So moved.
I'm sorry, who did that?
Me.
Jamal, okay.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Zach, Dak. Is there any discussion?
Outstanding.
Yes.
Good job, John, in the IVC.
I would just like to also thank the City of Irvine for their, you know, part in The city has been very, they've been a good partner in a lot of ways, so I don't know. The city definitely gets, gets some props from me for getting involved when they didn't have to.
Totally agree.
Mm-hmm, yes, ditto. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? On a seven to zero vote with student advisory voting yes, this 10.1 has passed. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by trustee Dak and seconded by trustee Bartlet. Is there any discussion? Questions?
Just to clarify, I guess, Dr. Stern, so this is three-quarters of a billion grant that we will be receiving, correct?
That is correct. $150,000 per year over the five-year term.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, let's vote, please. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, this grant acceptance has been passed. Okay, 10.3. Saddleback College License to Use Agreement for Communications Facility Verizon Wireless. Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
It was moved by trustee Milchiker and seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, let's vote. On a seven to zeros vote with trustee, student trustee voting yes, this passes. Thank you. And now we have 10.4. Student Services Center Cafe, Saddleback College. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I can second.
Okay, and down here, which one of you?
Me.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Jamal, seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee voting yes, this passes. We are now on to Section 11, Human Resources. We'll turn that over to Dr. Biscatill.
So we'll start with 11.1.
That's actually my item.
Oh. All right, we'll start with the chancellor, 11.1.
Yeah, this is an adjustment to the salary schedule for the district management team. So I'm recommending to the Board of Trustees to approve improvements to the salary schedule for district management for fiscal year 2025-26 in the amount of 3.74%. And for 2627, in the amount of 5.45%, of which 0.92 would be applied to the salary schedule and the remainder would be applied to an additional step nine. We're going to have about 75% of our managers on step eight. And this is going to be an opportunity that we won't see in a while to add an additional step. So I'm making that recommendation to the board.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Dak and seconded by trustee Bartlett to adjust the salary schedule for managers. Is there any discussion?
Just I'll make a comment that I think it's obvious, I mean, maybe it's not, but it's obvious to me that in order to have the great colleges and district we have, we have to have outstanding faculty. We have to have outstanding staff and we have to have outstanding managers. And I think that this item reflects the, assuming how I think it's going to go, reflects the sentiment of the board. And we, I appreciate all that everyone does here, all three of those groups. And I think that we're very proud that this district is one of the best, I believe, not only in the state but in the nation. We are very proud as trustees to cite those rankings. I know it puts probably a little pressure on the two college presidents to continue to do that. But I think a little bit of, you know, a little bit of pressure is okay. But in order to do that, it's really expectations that we continue the level of excellence with the managers. So with that, I will yield back the floor.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion or comments, which is discussion? All right, let's vote, please. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee abstaining, this motion passes.
First, I want to thank all the managers for staying here in the board meeting. We really appreciate it.
I wonder why.
And second of all, again, obviously, I just read the item. But I do want to, you know, as I've been working with the board here, it didn't take a lot for them to really honor the fact that this is a stellar group in terms of our managers. You don't always get all the love. You know, we give a lot of love to our faculty and our classified professionals and others. But I just want to reiterate that this is a stellar group. Not only are you given your minds through your expertise and your knowledge and innovation, you're given your hearts to these positions. And it shows in the outcomes that we see for our students and also in terms of the kind of the operational effectiveness of our district. So it really truly does take a village and you are a big part of that. So I just want to thank you for all your, for your good work and putting, again, your hearts and minds into these roles. I know they're not always easy. So thank you, thank you, and congratulations.
Yes, congratulations to everybody. And thank you to the leader, Dr. Barnes, who helps makes these things happen. 11.2.
There are no changes to 11.2, thank you.
Okay, a motion, please.
Go move, second.
It has been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Milchiker. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I thought it was wonderful that we honored all of our employees of the year. I love that. And now I'm going to mention several top employees that we've had that are retiring and thank them for their service. The first one is Miriam Azare Decordi. And I do remember her from years ago. She's a counselor at Saddleback College and she worked here 31 years. And Carrie Crabbe is a kinesiology instructor and the head football coach, worked here 17 years. Yolanda Goldsmith, counselor at Irvine Valley College, worked here for 27 years. And Nicoletta Loretta, who I also know is a nursing instructor at Saddleback College and worked here for 26 years. There's many, many years of good work from these people and we wish them well in their retirement and thank them for their good service. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we have our motion. So wait, yeah, 11.2. So it's time to vote, please. On a seven to zero vote with trustee, student trustee abstaining, this passes. 11.3.
No changes to 11.3, thank you.
Okay.
So moved.
I'm sorry, who said it? Okay, and a second.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Milchiker that we approve the classified personnel actions. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, let's vote. On a seven to zeros vote with student trustee abstaining, the classified personnel actions has passed. Section 12, Educational and Technology Services, 12.1. Do we have a motion?
Move the item.
I second it.
It has been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Milchiker. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. On a six to zero vote with one vote, not, one trustee not present to vote and the student trustee abstaining. Oh, it says Inman, but I pressed it. Yes. I'm here. Let's try that again. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee abstaining, the final action in public session for discipline has passed. We know you'll fix that. That's funny. Who wasn't here? Me, I was here. Information items, 13.1, the financial status report. Any comments? We don't vote on this or any information. Okay, how about 13.2, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers? Any comments, discussion? Okay. We have written reports from administrators, very interesting, lots of things going on, of course, as we know. Is there any other business that we need to take care of? Oh, yes, okay. Wait a minute. Here we go. Okay, Chancellor Barnes.
All right, just quickly, I just want to extend my congratulations to all of the faculty members who are recognized tonight. And I look forward to Classified School Employees Week and celebrating all of the beautiful work happening with our classified professionals as well. And then also, I know President Hernandez is going to talk about this, but congratulations to the men's tennis team for clinching the state championship. So that's amazing.
Yay.
Lovely. I know you're going to say more about that. And then obviously, we're able to give our kudos to trustee Clemente. So again, thank you so much for your good work. And we will be keeping our eye on you because we know you're going to go places for sure. And then last but not least, something that wasn't mentioned, I do want to extend a big congratulations to Dr. Clark. That's Latisha, who just earned her doctoral degree. So her dissertation is entitled, "Beyond the Green: The Rainbow of Challenges and Triumps." And I'm getting emotional saying this. And triumphs in fundraising for women of color in politics. As you know, it's a rare thing. And so for, to have women of color in politics and then two, to have women and women of color in particular earning doctor degrees. I do want to extend my congratulations to you and we're eager to see where the study goes. That concludes my report.
Okay, President Hernandez.
Thank you, Board President Inman. As Dr. Barnes just shared, congratulations to the IBC men's tennis team for capturing the 2025 C2A State Championship in Ventura. This after a 5-2 comeback victory over Foothill College. I do want to congratulate head coach Ross Duncan for working with the team. They entered the postseason as number four seed and they did defeat number one Ventura, number three Riverside en route to the title. I want to just, you know, piggyback on the comments that trustee Dak mentioned. The City of Irvine has been an incredible partner to Irvine Valley College. And I previewed this grant a couple of months ago. And we've been working with the city for the past year and we're very grateful for the funding assistance that will allow up to 25 students aged 24 or younger who are in financial need and risk of houselessness to be able to receive 2,000 a month rental stipend. And we know that we have to tap into the brado ecosystem if we're going to truly be able to make an impact. We can't do it on our own. And so this is a one-year grant. And with successful implementation, we may be eligible for additional grant years through 2028. And again, I'm just very grateful to the city. And then lastly, another comment I know I shared at the Foster Youth Guardian Scholars Next Up graduation event last Friday at IBC. But I just want to say, Sharla, that your allowing yourself to be vulnerable in this space has been extremely refreshing. Your lived experience, all of it, the good and perhaps the not-so-good, are incredible assets that are going to serve you well. And it's truly been a gift for us all to embrace. And I just want to congratulate you as you move on to your next journey.
May I?
Yes.
Thank you, President Inman. I want to align myself with Chancellor Barnes's comments. A member of my team also was successful in getting her doctorate. So I'm pleased to announce that the Saddleback Foundation is now head up by Dr. Liz McCann. Who wrote a great dissertation which begins unnecessary roughness. And forgive me, Liz, I forgot everything after the colon. But I will share with you, I will paraphrase, that it is very much about the challenges of black student athletes in the community college system. And we were very proud as her colleagues to witness her defense just recently. I want to speak, if I might, on behalf of many of the people sitting behind me, probably 90% of them who are managers in echoing Chancellor Barnes's comments, but also to thank Chancellor Barnes for her advocacy and the board for approving raises for the managers. I am very proud to be supporting a group of people that I think are the smartest, hardest-working, most passionate, most innovative, and most humane people that I have ever known in my life after having come from other careers. So I speak for them in saying thank you, but I also speak to them for all of you in saying how much we appreciate the work and the innovations that they bring about. And finally, tonight, I want for these misunderstandings and thank goodness we have AI to share them. Thank you all.
I didn't know who it was.
Vice Chancellor McDonald? Vice Chancellor Biscatill?
No report.
Vice Chancellor Gable?
No report.
Okay. And once again, this has been a very active meeting. And the interesting things about all different kinds of people from different backgrounds has just has occurred throughout the entire meeting. And so I think we've done a good job tonight. Thank you very much.